Okay, I'd like to call to Water the -- are you ready, Steve?
We are rolling.
I'd like to call to Water the March 9th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, whose flag is in the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment, as time has been we think about our servicemen who have given their lives or still serving, and some disturbing news that I heard in the last couple of days, that there has been an increase in the amount of suicides among returning veterans from the theaters of war. Please think about that as we can. Thank you very much. First order of business today is the vegetation management discussion. Is Paul here?
Will. Is Paul coming over, Patty?
He's on his way, and I think Scott Michaud has a PowerPoint that can orient the discussion.
All right. Paul should be here before we start, I would think, so I'm going to delay for a few minutes. Did you -- have any of you had an opportunity to look at the summary of the presentation?
Yes.
We could probably move that now.
I will give a summary of actions.
My second.
Okay, all with a favor?
Aye.
Paul, he's not saying that he's involved. Okay, surely he wants that summary?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, are there any proponents of spraying here?
Proponents? These are proponents.
Proponents?
Of spraying.
Spraying.
Of herbicide applications? Well, I don't know if it's all spraying. The season or something else?
I was just curious.
Point of information, sir. Representatives of the Enterprise and WATK are watching on the screen.
Okay. Tom Cendieri, welcome, Tom. I was taking notes, I really rely upon the table.
We're going to rely upon the table. And...
I was just going to have a comment now. I was going to wait until after we had the presentation, but we could do that now. Is there any public comment?
I don't know.
Is this on the agenda item or is it separate?
Well, it's public comment.
No. We haven't -- do you have -- public comment usually is reserved for items that are not on the agenda at this meeting. Do you have some comment that's not on the agenda?
No, I guess I would just like to reserve an opportunity to speak after.
Thank you. You do know that this is a meeting, not a hearing. And I will welcome comments after we see Paul's presentation, but this is not a hearing, this is a meeting. Do you want to call Paul if I have a reason?
Oh, Patty just said it's on this morning. I think it was scheduled for five past.
According to this, it says one o'clock.
That's true.
Maybe we should stay a little longer.
No, it said five after. I want to -- do you want -- I can report.
Okay.
I attended a meeting this morning of the Upper Cape Transfer Station Board of Managers, which was the Upper Cape, Bourne, Falmouth, Sandwich and Mashpee, who actually have intermunicipal agreements that trash and refuse gets haul to the Upper Cape rail station so that it leaves by rail rather than trucks, and I'll take it up later because policy.
Okay, Paul, there was a little misunderstanding. I had one o'clock and apparently you had 1:05.
I did.
So you're in time that I'm a little late.
Thank you.
So without further ado, I'll turn it over to you. You're supposed to give us a report today.
Yes, we have a report, and I think the best way to do it is Scott Michaud, who's done a lot of work on the rights-of-way project, the mapping project, has a PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to go through, and the elements of the report are in that, so I'd like Scott to present that, and then I think we'd have a discussion after.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul. Good afternoon, I'm Scott Michaud with the Water Resources Program at the Commission, and just going to take you through some of the work that we've been doing over the last year or so. In this first slide, and I'll sit down so everybody can see, this first slide, you see the rights-of-way that NSTAR maintains on the Cape, and as many of you probably know, this maintenance is required by federal regulation to ensure an uninterrupted supply of electricity to the region. And this is a public notice that was released in 2010, it was noticed in the MIPA monitor indicating...
You might tell people what MIPA stands for.
Sure, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. So it's a requirement that NSTAR file these public notices to announce the release of the annual plan for their integrated management plan to maintain these rights-of-way, and there's also an indication in this notice that herbicides will be applied.
Excuse me, Scott, does that list every town on the Cape?
No, it does not. I don't recall offhand which towns are missing.
Okay.
I believe Mashpee may not be on there among others. So in March of last year, the Commission submitted a six-page comment letter commenting in detail on the annual plan in an attempt to bridge what we observed in the annual plan with what the state regulations require.
Scott, if you could just keep that, I didn't interrupt you. Just want to call attention to the second paragraph there where it says, "Commission staff has specific concerns regarding NSTAR's proposal to apply herbicides to rights-of-way on Cape Cod served by sole source aquifer." That's the only official position of the Cape Cod Commission on NSTAR rights-of-way to date. I know if you read the press and letters to the editor, you might think to the contrary, but that statement there by staff and two-year-long moratoriums are the Commission's only interaction with NSTAR, and I just want to underline, underscore the fact once again, that we have no authority and no real official capacity to deal with NSTAR. We respond to requests by the town to engage in that process. Thank you.
So really, this letter was geared toward better understanding the annual plan and making sure that it met the requirements of the state regulation. This is the state regulation. It's administered by the Department of Agriculture, and some of the purposes stated in the regulation are that it ensures integrated pest management is used, integrated pest management includes the use of herbicides, and the regulation establishes standard requirements and procedures in order to prevent unreasonable risks to habitat and human health, and the regulation also provides for public comment. These are some of the resources that the regulation lists, and it also indicates setbacks for herbicide applications. The top one is for applies to herbicides that are not restricted based on the herbicide's characteristics and potential threats to drinking water, habitat. And these are herbicides that NSTAR is planning to use. They're not planning to use restricted herbicides. And so that limited spray area that you see at the top includes wellhead protection areas, so...
Excuse me.
Sure.
When you say they're not planning to use restricted items, oh, they can't go forward on that basis at all. That's not -- they are not allowed to do that. That's making the suggestion that they might.
Well, restricted applies to a short list of herbicides that are of particular concern, and NSTAR is not proposing to use those types of herbicides.
Have they been in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, cool.
And so non-restricted herbicides may be used in Zone 2 wellhead protection areas, they may be used outside of a 50-foot radius around a private well, and they may be used beyond a 10-foot buffer to a wetland. Non-restricted herbicides cannot be used in a Zone 1 wellhead protection area, for example. This is the bottom set of setbacks. They can't be used within 10 feet of a wetland, within 50 feet of a public water supply.
My computer just stopped. Now, given our experience with the military reservation with regard to the movement of water towards the aquifer, is there any indication of mapping the method of flow in regard to the elevation and water seeping in there? In other words, 50 foot away from a water source may be different in a case where there's evidence of, let's say, flow towards the well versus one that is indicated by the mapping that's going away. Is there any evidence that that's taken into consideration?
The state regulation pretty much looks at setbacks.
The setbacks.
So providing a distance away from the protected resource where the herbicides can be applied. So they're not really looking at discrete areas on a map and looking at which way groundwater is flowing.
Okay, thank you.
So this is one of the maps that was published with the annual plan, and it shows West Barnstable, and the map essentially uses a topo map. You can see the right-of-way here that NSTAR was proposing to apply herbicides to in 2000, and it doesn't include all the rights-of-way. For example, there's a line coming through here that they weren't proposing to apply in that year. But in looking at the map, it became clear that the map did include all the resource areas that the state regulation sets out to protect, and for example, there are some private wells, you can see them here noted in green, but we know there are more wells out there that needed to be accounted for. This is an annual plan map on the left-hand side for Eastham, and again, Eastham is essentially completely dependent on private wells, and there are no private wells mapped on this map. Eastham endeavored to map their private wells in 2009, so we anticipated that those wells would appear on this YOP map. And on the right-hand side, Wellfleet, you can see that there are some private wells up here, and again, we know there are far more than what we were seeing on this map. And so our sense was that these maps were incomplete, and that was reflected in the Commission's comment letter. This is how we anticipate foliar applications are applied. We haven't actually observed this in the field, but this is how we conceive that this is being done by NSTAR.
Okay, so it's not an area spreading of the folium, it's discrete point.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, there are three types of applications. There's folial applications, is what you see here, and then there's basal applications where they apply around the trunk of a tree, and then they also mow these rights-of-way, and they apply herbicides to the cut stump. So there are three methods. And so this has become an emotional issue for people on Cape Cod, particularly considering that Cape Cod sole source aquifer is essentially a sole source of drinking water. And so some of these photographs show folks doing maintenance in the right-of-way in anticipation, in an attempt to show NSTAR that these areas don't need to be maintained. It's already being done. So in 2010, NSTAR agreed to postpone the application of herbicides until 2011, and the Cape Cod Commission agreed to map private wells. Before we could go out and map these wells, we needed to know where the rights-of-way are, and the map on the right is a map showing the right-of-way network from the five-year plan. Every five years, NSTAR has to submit an update of the long-term plan, but these rights-of-way shown in this map do not have any dimensional aspects to them, and they're not georeferenced, so it's essentially a cartoon. So the Commission's GIS department, in coordination with the Water Resources Program, developed this GIS coverage of the right-of-way network using a pole coverage, a pole GIS coverage, so we know where the poles are, and also using, doing a visual analysis of aerial photography to identify where the transmission lines were, and measuring about 110 feet off of those transmission lines, and we were able to create this network, and there's a little bit of a detail up here, and I selected that segment because it shows the variable width of the right-of-way. Up in here, we actually have, I believe, two transmission lines running through, whereas you have a single line moving through here. So it gives you, it's really just an estimate of where these rights-of-way are. We don't know exactly where the rights-of-way movements end and begin, but this was a good approach.
You used to figure 110 foot. Is it 110 foot from a center line, or is it 110 foot on either side?
It's 110 feet from the pole, and in some cases, there's a double line of poles and transmission lines, so we measured 110 feet off of each line.
What about the other side?
220 if there's one line, and then if there are two lines, it's 220 plus the distance between the two transmission lines. And so we felt that that was a conservative enough number that we would be able to best estimate where the rights-of-way are. The next step was to overlay this information with a parcel coverage, and so those parcels that intersect this right-of-way would be selected as potential targets for private well mapping. And incorporating billing records for public water supply, filtering that information out, and also known vacant land, GIS was able to narrow down the targeted parcels to those that you see in beige. And ultimately, today, these are the wells that we mapped in that area based on that So we started out with over 5,500 parcels that intersected that right-of-way, and after filtering out the town water connections and the vacant land, GIS was able to narrow that down to a little over 1,000, and this includes the work that was done in Eastham in 2009. As we went into the field to do some of this mapping, we encountered more vacant land, uninhabited land, and we were able to narrow down the number of parcels to a little over 300. And ultimately, we mapped 244 wells. There are fewer than 80 wells or fewer than 80 parcels with potential wells on them that we weren't able to find for various reasons, whether somebody wasn't home. A lot of these wells are buried, but we have made an attempt to contact these property owners, and we're actually following up on that. This is a breakdown of the wells that were mapped by town, and you'll see that Eastham and Wellfleet comprised the majority of the wells that were mapped. Truro has one well that was mapped. The transmission lines do not extend beyond the block, it's Truro. And Sandwich opted out from this project.
Did they give a reason?
No, I don't believe so. I think they felt they had the information.
They felt that they had already mapped all of them.
This is a map the Commission's GIS department completed. It shows the right-of-way, the estimated right-of-way based on our analysis, and the private wells are denoted with stars. This is North Wellfleet, and the public water supplies are noted here. This is the National Park Service water supply. The light shaded area is the Zone 2 wellhead protection area for that, and as I mentioned, NSTAR will not be able to apply herbicides within a Zone 1. Here's an example of a Zone 1, this dark shaded area, so it's fairly narrow around the well on this particular basis. This is South Wellfleet. Again, the private wells are these stars here. Northeastham. These wells were mapped in 2009. This is Southeastham.
Does that map show that one of those wells was in the right-of-way?
Sure.
In the right-of-way?
These are some of the raw data, the raw information transposed on a water table map. This is the Dequestet Lanes in Wellfleet in Northeastham, and portions of the Nossett Lanes here. This is Eastham, the southern portion of the Nossett Lanes. And the dark points are public water supply serving restaurants, hotels, and the green points are private wells. So here we are in 2011, and NSTAR has announced an extension of its moratorium, and the Commission has embarked on proposing a number of projects to continue to inform this issue, and we anticipate partnering with the Department of Agriculture as well as NSTAR to achieve these. And some of the basic elements of a pesticide fertilizer use inventory include a literature search or review, and to try to get a handle on how pesticides are being used on the Cape, as well as compiling and summarizing existing information through records that the Department of Agriculture maintains, through pesticide use reports that usually submit on an annual basis. Talking to golf courses, municipalities that are applying fertilizers and pesticides to their ball fields, agriculture, we anticipate working with the Farm Bureau, and the state also has a mosquito control program that should be a source of information as well. In terms of general use, general pesticide use by residences and commercial properties that don't contract and do this type of work themselves, we anticipate perhaps using sales information to try to get a handle on how much pesticide and fertilizer are people buying at their hardware stores. And ultimately, we'd like to integrate this information with GIS to get a handle on where these products are being used, and finally, there'll be a project report to summarize the results. The Commission has done a little bit of this type of work with the Department of Agriculture. The Commission's GIS department broke, did some area analyses for some of these land use types that you see here, and the Department of Agriculture applied some pesticide application rates to those areas to try to get a sense for the mass of pesticide that's being used on Cape Cod. And this was a report that was presented to the Barnstable County Ad hoc Committee on Vegetation Management, and some of the initial results, and these results need to be fine-tuned, suggest that residential uses comprise the vast majority of pesticide use on Cape Cod. Commission will be embarking on a groundwater monitoring program, and some of the basic elements of that include using new and existing monitoring wells adjacent to the right-of-way, and preferably using wells where groundwater is relatively shallow to build in some conservatism into the program. And a challenge that this poses is anticipating where NSTAR will be applying their pesticides, because if the wells are not in an area where the pesticides are being applied, it's going to defeat the purpose of the program. So we'll need to coordinate with NSTAR on this particular piece. We anticipate installing up to 15 monitoring wells and collecting up to 162 water samples from a total of what we anticipate being approximately 27 wells. The lab analyses will be coordinated with the Massachusetts Pesticide Lab, and we'll be looking to the Barnstable County Lab to do the organic sample analyses. And then we'll have quarterly progress reports, and the final report will be completed at the year end. These are some wells that we put in Wellfleet in 2002, and some additional wells in Eastham that may be suitable for this type of monitor. So we'll be looking at some of these. And we also have the Barnstable Fighting Training Academy where there are wells that may also be suitable. That suite of wells noted in red that straddle the right-of-way would potentially give us the information we're looking for. And the pesticide education program, I think there's more to come on that, I'm not sure that's been scoped out entirely, but Paul may have some additional comments on that. And that's the end of the presentation.
Scott, thank you.
I have one question, Scott. It was a question asked of NSTAR, what type of reliability do they promise for electric service with a pesticide management program versus other types of programs?
No, but like, I couldn't really comment on that.
Okay, I just, I did work for a utility at one time, and one of the issues has to do with, you can reduce the amount of cost of service if you can reduce the amount of reliability or increase the risk. So the investment, let's say, in those cases, a risk assessment, what size does a transformer have to be to serve a given load, not the connected load, but what the diversification gives you, you know, is an indication of what level of reliability NSTAR at this time is promising with this system versus if they, and they do this in business school, if you do nothing, okay, what level of reliability would, you know, would they offer with that? Because that seems to be the question that comes up over and over again, that the necessity of this is to reduce the vulnerability of the transmission line. What I don't hear, and what I haven't heard in this presentation, is what NSTAR says with regard to the level of exposure with regard to reliability of electric service for, on either or basis, either doing this or not.
Really, the focus that we've taken on this is looking at how herbicides are applied and what the sensitive resources are, and where they are relative to where the applications are going to be taking place. So we really haven't gone into an analysis of, well, what happens if you just let this vegetation grow, and what impact that will have on reliability of the grid.
Just a small question to Clark.
Just a small question to Claudia. We talk about pesticides and herbicides and pesticides. What are we really talking about here? Just herbicides or do they also use pesticides?
Herbicides are included in the family of pesticides, but NSTAR is applying herbicides.
Only?
Yes.
So that's the only side, so to speak, that we're talking about?
All right. If I may just clarify, when they did their presentation, they really referred to them as pesticides because they're sides, even though they might be of a different category under EPA and DAR, they are actually just considered, everything with a side is a pesticide.
The Federal Insecticide Fungicide Rodent Side Act, FERFA, is a principal law that authorizes EPA to regulate the manufacture, distribution, sale, and use of pesticides in the United States. Does that also cover herbicides?
Yes.
So it's all in this?
It's all FERFA?
As it relates to NSTAR's proposed plan, it's herbicides. But, you know, I think when we're looking at this, that, you know, we're interested in pesticides with herbicides as a subset of that and fertilizers, what the aggregate use and impact is on the Cape. The basic fact that I think is undeniable is that we use too many pesticides and we need to reduce the use. And that's what we're engaged in trying to do because what you have here is a four-point plan. One involves the mapping that we've done. Now with the extra time, the ability to close in on those 80 properties that we don't have information on yet. The other piece is the monitoring piece. That's been scoped out. The cost of that is about $200,000. We're having discussions with the state right now about how we can get that piece of it done. The final piece that you saw is an education outreach program, which would look at working with local providers of these services, but then looking at FALMS Premier Lawn Program and Barnstable's Organic Fertilizer for the Golf Course Program, looking to make those programs Cape-wide programs. So the education piece and the final piece is really essential to deal with, to be able to establish regional goals for the reduction in the use of pesticides and fertilizers to protect public drinking water, public health, and also on the fertilizer side, have an impact on the nitrogen issue that we face. We have to be able to aggregate that information and establish current usage levels in order to reduce that usage over time and incorporate as part of that best management practices that we hope we can come up with and that everybody will be able to, NSTAR included. So that's the process that we would like to do, and that's what we're proposing to you, is a comprehensive study to set regional goals, understanding that we are a region, as a region, are different, living on a sole-source aquifer, that we use too, that we put too many chemicals on that, on the soil and on that aquifer right now, and that we need real achievable regional goals in order to reduce the impact on public drinking water and potentially public health and excess nitrogen. So I think it's entirely appropriate for us to do that. Now, that study piece is also scoped out. And it's going to cost at least $50,000 to do that. So we have to have some discussions about how we go about this. We're not going to ask NSTAR to contribute anything to this stuff because we are sensitive to the criticism of industry-funded research going forward. And we want to own it. And I don't think it's an issue that is particular to one user, although they would be covered by the UKE. So that's the plan that we have in front of you. And I just want to emphasize again that the county and Cape Cod Commission have no authority to regulate, to the extent that we would use a DC-DC Cape-wide that would cover everyone except NSTAR, the railroad, and the two major federal parcels that are on this peninsula being the National Seashore and the Massachusetts Military Reservation.
Did we not send a letter to Senator Wolf and the delegation asking for a greater level of authority with regard to regulation?
We didn't.
Have we heard anything?
No, we've heard nothing in response to that. Representative Turner has filed a piece of legislation that's based on a main program. In essence, it forces a discussion between NSTAR and the towns. But they, I mean, they have those discussions now, the discussion of an alternative plan, but the cost associated with that alternative plan has shifted to the municipality. And in the budget reality, I think we have to sort of, we're in the process of analyzing that bill, and I think we'll have more to say on that in the future. I don't want to get hung up on that today. What I do want to say is that, you know, reading, we have to deal with facts here. And that's what we want to try to do over the next 12 months, is to accumulate enough facts to have a discussion that produces results Cape-wide. You know, if you read the press, you might believe that the Cape Cod Commission has permitted, you know, or approved NSTAR's plan. There's never been any spraying on my watch. There's only been two year-long moratoriums. And the only comments that we've made officially on the record have been that we have specific concerns about NSTAR's proposed herbicide, integrated vegetation management plans that relates to herbicides. So I want to get that on the record. And I also want to say that the, I think sometimes we've been criticized for negotiating with NSTAR or even having discussions with them. Those negotiations and discussions have produced two-year-long moratoriums. And those discussions between the Cape Cod Commission and NSTAR have not always been pleasant. And when they have become unpleasant, we've asked Commissioner Lyons to come. And her involvement personally in both of those discussions resulted in the moratorium. So, you know, it's unnerving sometimes to read in the press such misinformation and fabrication of the actual facts. And it makes, I think, getting to regional goals and measurable results more difficult than it needs to be. But what we have proposed to you today is a four-point plan that in two parts still remains unfunded, but we're committed to go forward, get the funds, and do the work over the next 12 months. And I think what we'll wind up with in the end is a plan that sets a national standard for how to deal with these issues.
Well, the national standard is being attacked by, by fast-track legislation like this Bill 272.
Yeah.
In the Congress?
Yeah. Which has to do with the, you know, the use of pesticides directly put into, you know, into the water table, not to deal with noxious. And I guess I share a certain amount of your upset about, about the Commission, the three of us being accused of not, you know, not caring about this issue. When I was eight years old, I used to play in the Brook at White Horse Beach, which was the outlet stream for cranberry logs. And I got empedigo and was quite taken by that. Professionally, I spent some time as a corrosion engineer. And working out in the Southwest, I discovered the great amount of buildup of particulate matter when you got to the water systems out there that was reducing affordability of drinking water as well as acting in a corrosive way in the closed system, air conditions and heat exchanges throughout there. So I'm personally aware of what happens when you do not look at this, you know, at this issue. At the same time, one of the things that I don't hear in this is what would an alternative of discreet manual extraction be with regard to this? Because we're, you know, we seem to be emphasizing the, you know, what I call pesticide management, you know, with the intrusion of chemicals only, and we're not looking at what might possibly be an alternative, however labor-intensive it might be. It, you know, it is another means of doing it because as you, as some of the slides show, you showed, you know, let's say, discreet application of material in order to reduce the, you know, the impression people might have with putting Agent Orange and sort of, you know, broadcasting it, you know, to defoliate the area. The other piece is that we do have noxious vegetation that they're not, you know, I don't think we're looking at, like poison ivy and sumac and, you know, and, was it bittersweet?
Yeah.
Okay. That, you know, that are intrusive and invasive species, you know, that are here. And we spend some time with trying to, you know, to manage and control those as well. But I'm reminded of the phrase, you know, you're not just a little bit pregnant. You have toxic activity going on in one place. We need to, and it's going on in all places. Do you think that we have the capacity to regulate all of the use of pesticides and herbicides on Cape Cod?
I think that our authority to do that is still in question. But we, there's no limit, as I mentioned last time, to our leadership on the issue. And I think that we do have some ability to regulate these issues. We don't have the ability to regulate entities that have federal preemption for other purposes established by Congress to use these kind of programs. We just don't have that. The only thing we have is the power of persuasion. But I'm sure that, you know, utilities or federal entities would feel more pressure to use best management practices on their properties if those best management practices were adopted Cape-wide. And I think we need to start with the municipalities. You know, some of them have good programs that relate to organic fertilizer use and some of them have lawn programs. Many of them also have licensed pesticide applicators and use very similar substances that NSTAR does in their towns.
I think they call it a sandbox approach because, you know, one's using, the other's using the type.
But we have to get over the impression, Bill, that what one person is doing, especially if they're an institutional entity, is wrong, but what we do on our lawns is okay, and what we do for the town is okay, and what the National Seashore does is okay, and what Auburn does doesn't have any threat. I mean, it's not a rational argument. So what we're trying to do is set the table and establish aggregate information for all of these substances. Because what we want to do is be able to get into a discussion about alternatives. What alternatives are there to chemicals? But until we understand what the totality of the potential threat is, what the diversity of the threats are, it's anecdotal at best to try to develop approaches, alternative approaches.
Well, I certainly can argue with that. I was, you know, my training is, you know, observation, measurement, you know, hypothesis, you know, theory and then law. But so, so I think we're in an observation and measurement phase is what you're saying.
Exactly.
Well, to follow on that, I'm kind of jumping a little bit ahead. But when we talk about, our goal is to, to find the facts, to do the fact-finding here.
Right.
And I guess, I'm thinking back to my years ago on the base, on the MMR with those contaminant issues there, that if you find a monitoring well that does have contaminants in it, would that then cause us to take the next step, which might be to determine groundwater flow? Or are we just going to, for the time being, get the facts and then look to other ways in which we can correct the problem?
The monitor program, monitoring program, I think, is essential for establishing a baseline. NSTAR has sprayed in the past. They have used herbicides in the past. If you go back several decades, they've used them on the Cape. And then they stopped. So I think we want to, we want to know sort of what's out there. We want to know what the baseline is. We want to be able to measure the impact of people that are using chemicals and whether they're reaching the water supply.
Well, that's why my question is, are we going to end up having to do groundwater flow studies or do we already know what the flow of groundwater is?
I think the good news is, I think we have a really good picture of like groundwater modeling on the Cape.
We do.
Yeah, from, a lot from the MMR on the upper Cape, but a lot, we work closely with USGS on those, on those issues. They've been revised. A lot of the wastewater discussions have sort of led us to that discussion. So we've got a really good field for groundwater flow on the Cape.
And if I could just add to that, in speaking with Mark Begley, who was part of the Ad-Hoc and talking about if we were doing a monitoring, he was, you know, talking about his work with Tom, and that to really get an accurate picture, you would look at, you know, he said, you know, how they do it theirs, they look at the water flow, and then you can do staggered monitoring from, like, sort of downstream from there at different levels. So you know if it, is it, does it go this far into the soil, this far? So he said that you would be, you two guys would know all about those little catchment areas, but that would be really the way to go.
Well, there are several issues with regard to looking at elevations.
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't know whether, because you might have a stronger flow in a narrower area, or you might have a more, you know, a wider flow that might not be moving as fast, but still isn't training over time.
Right. And the argument with some of these is that they decompensate by their life, you know, they lose their harmful properties. So at what point do they do that? Do they make it to the water before that happens or around?
Well, I think that we're all concerned that we know how large the problem is. I think there's been enough concern expressed about it, both in the public, and I think that we shared some concerns about where we are on it. I don't want to, I guess the impression that I don't want to leave with anybody is that we are essentially supporting one modality of treatment with regard to this, that we're trying to come up with a best practice. And I think the charge that I think that you should hear from us is that at the end of all of this, we would know what the best practice management would be with regard to one or the other, and that we would know what the impact would be of one or the other based upon the amount of risk that it attaches to the, to the place of application. And I think that's within, you know, the capacity of Cape Cod Commission to do. Would you agree?
I think it is within our capacity to establish regional goals for the reduction in the application of chemical pesticides and fertilizers. I mean, we have to stop the abuse of those substances. And, you know, our goal is to protect the citizens of the Cape from those chemical threats, not to protect them from a utility.
Well, just, you know, just anecdotally, I've made the argument, you know, when I was at this county commissions conference, that the fact that you're relying upon the manufacturer's recommended practice for application does not relieve you of the responsibility of, let's say, of oversight to, you know, because of, let's say, of users, residential users, who may not have, let's say, a complete sense of responsibility with regard, you know, with regard to use. It's that, you know, if they use a pound, you know, 10 pounds is better. And it didn't play with them because they basically had made up their minds that they wanted to go forward with this.
Yeah, it would be very difficult for us to suggest that our authority supersedes the existing authority of the state and federal government in this area. What it is, I think, incumbent upon us to do is to demonstrate leadership and persuasion by effectively aggregating all the information and making the case that the Cape is a special place and we need to keep it special. And we need to do that by developing alternatives and real achievable reductions in the amount of pesticides and fertilizers we use on this peninsula.
And if I just may add into here, and I'm not sure if anybody, I'm sure I'll be hearing from people that are members of the public, I might have even spoken with you on the phone, I'm not sure if any of you are those people. But I too, you know, have been very concerned about the information and disinformation that's been put out there. From what I understand, Silent Spring was asked to put out a specific paper by Green Cape. And talking with a particular person from Silent Spring, they said that they really didn't read it, they didn't know. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of feeling out there that the meeting was stacked, that the outcome was predetermined, people's minds were made up. And I just wanted to be made clear here that that is not the case. I would say, to be honest, it was probably a third and a third and a third. And I think that NSTAR came willing to discuss this openly and with people who they knew didn't agree with them. And there was a large group of people who were professional, had been down this road before with MMR, that's why they were invited, their expertise, they're still managing those entities between the public and the military. And they were very open. And people came there with the interest of what was for the Cape. And my interest, excuse me, my interest was about all of the Cape. Because when this problem became huge, especially in the outer Cape, which is where I live, people were taught, were screaming at each other. Both had something to say, but nobody was hearing the other person. And as I saw, as I looked at the picture, I started to see that there were many entities that were spraying this. And that has been my focus from the beginning, to reduce the overall impact. So I just want that on the record and as to pick out one group and separate that from everybody else that's being, that is using these products. I didn't think that was a fair, fair way to go. So I just wanted that there, especially on the setup of the meeting.
Because I will ask for some input from the public that's here.
No, I think, I think what you're suggesting, at least from what I'm hearing, is good. Because we don't have control. Not that we shouldn't try to affect. Not that we shouldn't try to affect changes in any way we can, which is working with our legislative delegation and our congressional delegation as well at the federal level. But I think we have to start by, you're right about getting the facts. And that's, in a way, there are some similarities to the MMR years ago. It was really getting the information and getting the correct information, and showing the leadership, and really exercising that leadership to achieve the results that we want. So I think, from my way of thinking, it's the right approach.
Well, they're also following the recommendations that NSTAR's that came up.
Hopefully, hopefully this is not going to be the extent of the jet fuel dumping that we got at the MMR. That's what, I think, hopefully, we are at a stage where we are.
Well, it's contaminating groundwater, that's really what it is. So whether it's there or whether it's here, it's the same thing. And it's finding the right approach. And again, it's showing the leadership. We, as communities, could not affect the change of our own, even though the base actually is in four towns, Falmouth, Mashpee, and the Sandman. But nevertheless, the four towns had no authority to do anything. But the persistence and the ability to get the information is what allowed it to change. It was that kind of pressure, but you have to have the facts in order to affect change. It can't just be, this is what's happening. You have to actually show and demonstrate, which will be done with the monitoring wells, that those are, that those are the facts.
And Congressman Delhamp was very instrumental in getting support for it, you know, for that.
Isn't Congressman Keating, I attended a meeting at his office on Monday, on various issues that affect the district, not just the Cape, but the town district. And that's clearly one of the major issues that he has as well, and I'm sure you know that.
Yes.
I'm talking to the choir here, but I think you know that the congressman is very, very concerned about these, and they're high on his priority list of issues.
All right, at this point, I would invite, I think, Sue.
I have a whole range of questions I'd like to ask, but first of all, I think it would be helpful.
Would you identify yourself and if you're a representative organization?
Yes, my name is Sue Phelan, and I'm the director of Green Cape. I just have some questions for the commission. It would be very helpful to have the copy of the latest moratorium, possibly on a website somewhere, so that everyone could read the agreement, as was available last time. And also, the information, maybe the slides from your PowerPoint, would be very helpful to be able to study.
Wasn't the NSTAR put it in an op for press release document paper, but if that's the one, it's not there.
They sent in this press release, I believe, the moratorium is an extension of the original ones, but I don't think, it's not unreasonable to ask that that be memorialized and available on the website.
And I do have some questions, or some comments, actually. I do have a question about if you ever determined what the total acreage under the rights of way was, and what that acreage was.
I don't think we calculated that. We could certainly run that number. I just want to emphasize that the GIS work was an estimate.
Right.
And so.
I understand it wouldn't be exact.
Yeah, I think that 6,000 acre number that you saw there was not only the NSTAR right away, but also railroad right away.
That's the other question, was it, did all of that include the railroad rights of way? Which I should comment, actually, the railroad rights of way utilizes one of the same chemicals that NSTAR uses, so that area would be getting a double dose, where the railroad is interfacing with the right of way. I do have some concern about the testing, although I think it's not a bad idea to test. From my point, from my perspective, it's not preventive, obviously. It's just, you know, it's just determining what's there.
Well, I guess I'd like to be clear, do you think we should test them?
I think testing is not a bad idea.
Not a bad idea, should we do it or not? Because if we do nothing, it goes on, or continue as an either or, then, in other words, we could, we could say we don't want to use pesticides at all, you know, because we're going to be spending money on this.
I'd just like to say, I think, in general, it is a good idea to establish baselines, but I don't see the inclusion of the testing for any inert ingredients listed as part of the testing protocol. And I think where the inerts can make up to 98% of the product, it would be important to have those ingredients as part of the testing.
My recollection is when I was doing this measurement up in the Southwest, that the particular matter was made up of all of the material that was entrained in the soil, and I suspect that in the monitoring, you would see that.
I'd like to say, when you're going to test, don't you determine what you're testing for in the first place? So you have to list exactly what chemical or agents, or non-chemical, or whatever it is you're looking for, and then you have to be sure that there's a test to do that, and that your data is collected based on what you're testing.
But she's asking for.
What I see listed here is only the list of active ingredients, not the inert ingredients, which would also be, have health effect, potentially.
We could make that request, and the negotiations on the monitoring of data are definitely going to be between the commission and agricultural resources, and probably NSTAR. But we can make that request as part of that, those negotiations. The other thing I do want to point out is that county health department is going to have increased capacity with some investments you've made in the lab up there. The ability to do that kind of testing here, and to do sort of double-blind testing, I think, is an advantage that we have going forward, and cooperative extension, I think also has a role to play. Talk to Bill about the scope on the education outreach piece, too. So it's really a county-wide effort, it's not a Cape Cod Commission.
But her point is well taken, because the particular matter that is held does affect the probability.
Right.
And I think that's a good point, because the upgrade to the lab is going to be able to test more than what we were ever testing before.
So we'll have real-time information.
The other issue, I just want to clarify that while it's implied that these are just going to be, this herbicide would be applied with through backpack sprayers, in the actual plan, it does note the option of truck-mounted sprayers as well. And I guess I, is it clear how the pesticide education program is going to be funded at this point?
No.
I should just mention that Green Cape has had their own pesticide awareness and reduction program ongoing for 10 years now. We also have an organic lawn care program, little menu handout thing that we do. We've had, every single year, we've had lawn care programs to help homeowners specifically reduce their use of chemical fertilizers and pesticides.
Is it possible that we could link that, put a link into that for people?
Yeah, no, I would be, I mean, if Green Cape is open to participate in the formulation of the education outreach program, I think that would, I'd love their participation.
We have this structure of the cooperative, they have a lot of information already done. We've discussed bringing Green Cape in on that part of the education program.
Are you open to that?
I would like to discuss it.
So do you have any information on the people actually using the organic products at all?
Well, we have a list of the professionals that use it.
The professionals that do.
Yeah, if humans weren't going to do it themselves, we have a list of the professionals on our website, but that is a, it changes yearly.
Because they change.
Because they change.
Do you go through any vetting process with these people?
There's a third-party certifier that does that.
So that would be.
The Department of Agriculture.
So maybe we could talk with you then about how we might be able to share the workload and certain, like, major benefits.
But I just do have one, I do understand that you have to do this process, but from the point of view of trying to prevent the spraying, I think it's, I would like you all to consider the possibility of perhaps a pilot program was an alternative, studying alternatives. And people snicker at this all the time, but it's done in a lot of places. People use goats on rights of way.
I love goats.
To manage these difficult properties. I just looked, the Nantucket Conservation Foundation uses it on their open lands. There are actual local goat herds here who would entertain this notion. So I don't know whether it would be, you could ask NSTAR to do the pilot program, or the county could do that, but clearly, we don't have to just like not do anything on the rights of way in this interim time. We should be working on this.
I think I'd suggest that we should be looking at manual extraction, which could include that, because that's all part of the alternatives. So I think we're open to that, but the county does not have the resources, you know, to manage.
Goats.
To manage animals.
Yeah, but the farms, or the goat herds.
Yeah.
But they probably don't have to fence.
They're movable, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, we would want to have some reassurance from NSTAR that a person could go on, because those are not, it's not NSTAR property, it's private property.
It brings up a point about, have you been in touch with the towns with regard to the rights of way and their control over it? Because right now, the individual communities have absolute control over the, you know, the rights of way and the private property owners there. And we, I reached out through the assembly to ask whether or not they had been any additional activity on the part of the towns to look into contacting, well, private individuals, looking at, you know, their own activities, you know, within the community with regard to what they got to process, and I hadn't heard anything back from them on that.
I'm not aware of it, but I couldn't say either way, I'm just not knowledgeable if that's happened.
Did you have a question?
Sandra does.
I'm sorry, would you identify?
My name is Sandra Larson, Eastham. We were sort of where the earthquake started, as it ripped through.
Is there a earthquake here?
Specific to the NSTAR issue.
The fault on the east coast is, goes through Quincy.
I appreciate the opportunity, thank you for letting me just ask a question, make a comment. The, with regard to the mapping, it is excellent that wells and groundwater are being looked at, but 333 CMR acknowledges a lot of other facets of exposure that have not been, that really should have been included in some kind of mapping. And as I referenced, the earthquake that started in Eastham, we were standing with the pesticide applicators two weeks before they were starting, and of course, we are totally wells, and they knew nothing about the wells, which is what started all of this. But 333 CMR also talks about inhabited agricultural areas, different than perhaps maybe the Wetlands Protection Act or other acts. Agricultural areas are identified as any, yours or my tomato gardens. Inhabited areas include people's residences, but it also includes, and also recreational areas. There are two requirements that these areas be identified, because, well, the two requirements are that a minimum of 12 months has to elapse before certain herbicides are used, and they have to be applied in a certain way. So the idea is, if you don't know where those places are, there's no way to document, in other words, here's this X on the place, here was the application. And by the way, it is, I think, very misunderstood, NSTAR did apply herbicides on the Cape very recently, very, very recently. I think people don't understand that. But anyway, as they were doing that, your tomatoes or mine were never documented, your children were never mine, where they played and so forth were documented, and so there was no way of knowing if 12 months had elapsed and the procedures. The other comment that I would just make is that, over a decade ago, my children were exposed to a pesticide application and exhibited symptoms. They were made sick from this. I don't think there's anyone who wants a comprehensive look at this more than I do. I just think that our efforts have been, particularly to NSTAR, because it's difficult to sometimes lose your way when you're looking at it all. It muddies the water, so to speak. So I just want to make sure that people know, you know, I would love for what happened to my children never to happen to anyone else. And I know that we need to look at all of this. I just caution that if we don't do each job well, we could lose sort of all of it. So, thank you.
Wasn't that the railroad?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't the railroad application?
No, actually, it was a lovely big tree company that I would love to whisper in anyone's ear out in the hall, that goes into neighborhoods and sprays for caterpillars 30 feet in the air. It drifted two properties away. This was over a decade ago with my young children who were outside. So I do recognize there is a lot of other use that we need to look at. I just really like to do a good job of each one, so that we do the, we do the job well.
Since I was a kid, it was affected by it, I certainly sympathize, and I hope your children will know that.
Yeah, we don't know the long-term effects.
And Sandra, you understand that in looking at it, to look at one and not hold anyone else to that same standard is a very difficult thing to do, especially when there's federal and state preamptions put in place for them. So to make that case with a particular utility, I found, so say if they said they weren't going to do it, what would we do now? We'd all say, okay, we had a success, we can go home. There's a problem. And that has been my focus since the beginning, regardless of what anybody wants to paint me as, and I've been now pathological, but that has been my focus of this. And to me, NSTAR has been a distraction over the overall picture of what, people have to understand that this is a huge problem being exercised by many of us, and we are the biggest culprits. I mean, I thought the, I don't know if anybody saw the Cape Cod Times cartoon yesterday, but, you know, I said, well, the Cape Cod Times kind of gets the message here. So that is really where I'm at, and I do know it's education, but it's also having the facts to be able to say to people, look, this is real, this is what's happening here, the numbers, this is what you're drinking, this is what we're being threatened with, and then it comes home.
We need to have time.
Could I just say something about the project itself? I think that's well-defined, and that can be defined, and that work can be done, but I don't think we can ever underestimate the effort involved in outreach and education, because I have a lot of experience with the Falmouth Friendly Lawn Program, which I think was one of the best programs we could have had in a town, where we persuaded golf courses to use organic fertilizers, and they signed agreements. We actually gave them plaques after the first year, you know, when they, when they actually agreed to do it and were using it. The Board of Selectmen, you know, gave plaques to all of the people in town, the businesses who actually adopted the Falmouth Friendly Lawn Program, which was all organics, and to all the businesses, you know, the local nurseries and hardware stores and everyone who sold the organics as opposed to the pesticides and herbicides. And the Board of Selectmen, back in the 90s, when all this was going on, or the early 2000s, I forget, it had to be very early 2000, was even, we agreed to do a Falmouth Friendly Lawn at Town Hall. And we had Paul Miskowski, who's a landscaper, take everything out and move it, and everything that's there now is Falmouth Friendly Lawn. It never has to be watered, it never has to be fertilized or anything, and people laughed at us and took pictures of these grasses, you know, growing up, but it is still there and it is still maintained. And even where I lived, four years ago, we moved everything out of the front yard and the backyard, moved it around, and did a Falmouth Friendly Lawn. And in four years, that has never had to be watered and has never had a drop of fertilizer on it. So it can be done, and it just, unfortunately, the people who were doing it just wore themselves out, trying to convince everybody to go in that direction. So the program kind of, it didn't die, but it lost a lot of steam. But there, I think there's a will there on the part of people to really get back on this and get going with it, because it has huge advantages. I mean, just think of the water you don't have to use. I mean, with all the drinking water that we talk about, even where I live in Falmouth, having to put in a filtration plant for, what are they talking, like, I don't know, how many million gallons? And said, if everybody had a compost soil, and if we all did the Falmouth Friendly Lawns, you wouldn't have to build a major size filtration plant. So there are a lot of other goals that can be reached at the same time, which are all very good and very valuable to all the communities, I have to say about it.
A few.
Pushing Cape Cod Friendly Lawns.
There's, it's an important issue that whenever we come up with a suggestion as to how to move forward, as to what kind of move forward, as to what kind of a timeline we're talking about, because it's, you know, it's like doing a consultant's report, pick the report and put it on the shelf, and it doesn't go anyplace. What timeline would you estimate before we come up, we could come up with what I would call a reasonable level of measurable results in what you're doing?
Well, breaking it down into the four different pieces, you know, I think the mapping, a lot of the mapping's been done. I think finishing that is not going to be an issue. I think we can do that pretty quickly. The monitoring program, as long as we get state buy-in to that and get the funding for it, I don't think is going to be an issue to close by the end of the calendar year. And I think the end of the calendar year is an important date, because that's at a time, if EnStar's going to go forward and other people are going to go forward, they're going to start to issue their YOPs and have to respond. The issue that is the biggest lift here is this aggregate study of pesticide fertilizer use on the Cape. And so I think that is more difficult to define what that timeline's going to be. Initially, I think we have to get it funded. So I have been talking to potential funding sources Cape-wide, and I think we may have to discuss an appropriation to get that program up. So that's going to be caught up in the funding of it, the hiring of professional expertise to come in and do that. But I'm hopeful that that is also something we can accomplish by the end of the calendar year. The education outreach is something that we can start now.
Sort of rather than later, but I'm going to suggest to you that in terms of outreach for funding, that at the MMA, there was a presentation made by someone from Bedford that actually developed a process of creating an entity that was able to raise money for an application, but because it was serving a public need as opposed to being a tax, let's say, being part of a, part of a city in Bedford. And we may want to look into that as a, you know, as a potential way of, say, developing this process so we move towards a private-public partnership to, you know, to see, to move this process forward. It's evident that there are many people looking at this, and I think that, you know, that as much as possible, people should be involved, which also brings up, you know, an issue with regard to a recommendation by the, by your committee, that there be some continuation of that. I guess it's now more of a point of oversight in terms of, let's say, continuing to focus in, to focus interest on this area. And I hope that, well, all of us have now had direct experience in part of the Cape Cod Commission, and I think that that's, that gives me, you know, a level of confidence that we have the technical staff and the resources to be able to look at this in what I would call a rational way and come up with, you know, some direction we go forward. But there still needs to be that piece of, rather than having it have the appearance of being an internal audit, which is always suspect, I think that we have, we have to come up with some sensible way of having external oversight that, you know, that is brought into it in some way. And I don't think we've really, you know, really discussed that.
Well, for us, we're really talking about the leadership capability, which I believe we have, the leadership capability to make it happen, and the internal resources to be able to put that together. Obviously, it takes the cooperation of many, many people, but to put it together.
Yeah, two points on that. First, we've had initial discussions with the Association of Preserved Cape Cod. APCC has agreed to be a partner on the aggregation study, so they'll help us chase down some money, hopefully, although it may not be enough, so we may have to come back. And the reason we don't have a specific number for you today is because we're seeing how much we can raise from non-county, non-public sources upfront, but we'll be back to you with that soon. The second is I think it's easier for community working groups to remain engaged when they have, when they're responding to staff product, you know, rather than meeting in a group that isn't staffed and doesn't have any resources available to bring in outside expertise. And that's been.
That was a significant, let's say, shortfall in, let's say, in the committee that was formed.
Absolutely.
They did not have the expertise for it.
So I think we can continue to keep that community engaged, maybe augment that community. They would meet less often, but they would have much more staff content to respond to. And I think in that way, people would feel like they were much more involved in a substantive process and were having an impact on it.
Now, are you suggesting that they be self-organizing, or are you suggesting that we should have some kind of reporting?
I'd like to scope these, this four-point plan and these four projects individually first, and then try, and then figure out how to engage some sort of oversight committee that has.
How long would it be before we could come back with some recommendation on that?
I think within 60 days, we should have a pretty good scope on this thing and a much better feel for the funding associated with the monitoring program and the study.
And in the meantime, with the, with the activity you suggested here?
Yes.
And I do want to say that public participation was something that was recommended and discussed in the ad hoc committee, that there would be continued public participation. And I think that that is necessary for the word to get out, because those members then, you know, carry that news forward. So I think it's very important also to lend to transparency. I mean, you know, the easiest thing people can say is, well, we don't believe it.
But, you know, if we had structured public participation, not that the public isn't invited to all the meetings, I mean, they always are, but to have periodic structured public opportunities for.
Presentation and.
Well, yes, for public meetings. I'm thinking of the wastewater issue where there were, where the review committee met like every other week and did their work, but then every so often, there was a structured public meeting so that, with an agenda and with a facilitator, so that the public had an opportunity to come, to come into the process, offer suggestions or whatever. And then again, at another distinct period of time, do the same thing again. And I was thinking about even the consensus building institute, maybe for something like that might be helpful. You know, so that the, the public input is, when I say structured, I don't mean that there's only certain things you can say, I mean, the meeting itself is more structured so that the public can participate in the, in the highest degree that they can.
Yeah, my only cautionary tale is that there's four points to this plan. All of these have to be detailed with specific results, because we have to, we have to be very specific about our expectations going in in order to be able to judge the effectiveness on the end of this. So that's, that's what we'll try to do. The only difficulty in getting to that level of specificity today is from a resource perspective as it pertains to two components of the plan.
Now, one of the, one of the issues on any, on any proposal that's made by any public body is to have a hearing process, which invites the, all of the public to come in and review, you know, what's being proposed. And I think that this, you know, wouldn't answer to it. I recently did participate in a focus group that was facilitated in order to find out whether the organization was, you know, was meeting the expectations. And I think that a facilitator, where meetings that I've been to that have, you know, have important content, need to be facilitated, because I think that there's a, whether intended or not, there's a bias from, you know, let's say, from people that are engaged every day in the activity that, you know, that perhaps would lead the discussion in a less objective way. So I think that if we, if we have a hearing process, it should include some type of facilitated meeting, and I think we have to identify in the meantime.
I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves here, but anyway, but these are good thoughts.
Yeah, no, you're starting to scare me a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, first thing we have to do, and I've been talking to you from the get-go, is we have to, we have to figure out what problem we're trying to solve, and that's what you, that's what you.
Four points, specific expectations, really to put us in a position where we have enough resource material and facts to discuss the kind of alternatives and the kind of programs for reducing the amount of pesticide use on the Cape in a comprehensive, a comprehensive way. Yeah, I just have one, just, just an example, and one of the sort of criticisms that comes out there is anytime you say anything nice about EnStar, I think it sort of gets twisted. But I will say this, EnStar agreed to the moratorium last year. It was two months after they agreed to the moratorium, we were noticed by the railroad that they were going to spray the tracks.
I remember.
And we asked them to come in and have a conversation like we had with EnStar. They said, no, we have a federal preemption, we're not addressing that.
And yet they had a hearing to wear him, and I think I noticed you on that.
But I just want to give you, you know, to the extent that EnStar starts to look like the bad guy sometimes, they have been open to sitting down and negotiating, and they've extended the moratorium now for two years, and it's going to involve some clear-cutting this year, which has other fairly serious environmental impacts. So we have to get to a point through some method where we allow an integrated vegetation management plan to take place, and we allow that low growth to happen out there in a natural way. That's what's best for the Cape. And so I don't think there's a lot of disagreement about where we want to be. There's been too much disagreement over the strategies of different organizations have to get there.
Will we stay at the railroad? Are we talking Mass Coastal?
Yeah.
And when they apply theirs, they, they spray them from the trains as they barrel down, so it's not as though it's targeted, you know, it's.
Just, you know, not to demonize anybody.
Not to demonize them, but.
Just to put it in perspective.
Exactly. And EnStar has been very open, and, you know, I do believe that they were working very diligently on their MOUs and that sort of thing, and we got to this point.
Let's hope that they stay that way. In the meantime, I think that you have, Margaret, do you have something else?
If I could just ask, while all of this is going on, if simultaneously, an inquiry, could it be made to EnStar since it appears that you all are meeting with them regarding the whole idea of using goats? Because if that were to happen this year, they wouldn't have to do the extreme cutting and mowing that they're doing now.
At least in this section. Given the worst section.
Well, actually.
No, to the goats.
The goats could actually come from both ends and work towards the middle, and it could happen in one season, but if that were to happen, it would have to start fairly soon to be completed by late fall.
And if I could say, the issues about clear-cutting relative to natural heritage get all the wrong information. Timing of the mowing, raising the blade, they can accommodate, from a conservation permission, I deal with this all the time, you can accommodate natural heritage. Their bad practices with regard to cut and mow aren't a reason to say cut and mow is bad. It's that they need to also have best practices that acknowledges natural heritage and so forth. It can be done.
I believe that it's in, if you read their, their operation plan, they take into account all of those different issues of raising the blade and so many inches, and that is all written into the yearly plan.
But they put roads in, in Weathley during the height of nesting season, you know, so, I mean, they didn't acknowledge, so.
In that area, we've been very concerned with this.
The issue is it's problematic, cutting and mowing can be problematic too, especially if it's done incorrectly. What we all, I think, want to get to is an integrated vegetation management program where the natural low growth is established in a way that the power lines aren't at threat from some of the woodier growth species that are going to get taller over time. The question is, how do we establish that?
Right.
And so it's, we don't want clear-cutting and mowing necessarily as an answer in perpetuity. And we certainly don't want to put anyone in danger by any, an alternative method. So, I mean, to Sue's question, I think we can ask about that, and maybe cooperative extension could be helpful on that issue too, if we could. I have some thoughts on that.
Right.
Okay, so at this point, I think we've established that the, you know, the three of us are very concerned and engaged and involved in moving towards a, moving towards a sustainable solution. And you now have what I would call a direction from us. You've given us a response indicating when you come back with a, you know, with a, let's say, with some evidence of progress, and that, and you'll be, you'll be back before us, before that time, because we expect to see you every month.
Well, you have been seeing me every week.
Yeah, I know.
Always a pleasure, Paul.
Always a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Scott and Tom and Patty.
I want to thank everybody for coming and participating, and I hope that at this point, at least you, for the, for the close.
Can I have one quick question? Please excuse my ignorance. If the money could be found.
Identify yourself, please, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Bruce Bowen from Osterville.
Thank you.
If the money could be found to fund the goat project, for example, do we have to buy, because they have the right of way, ask EnStar's permission with the goats out there?
There are, it's a more complicated question than it seems, but it's definitely something that we can follow up on, and I don't think it's, and I think it's something we can probably get done if we can find funding for the program.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to recognize Scott's work and Tom's work. There was a lot of field work associated over the last year with the mapping project, and they did some exceptional work up there.
Thank you, Paul. Clear Core was a part of this too.
Yes, so I think, and thank you, Patty. Nancy?
We'll take a two-minute recess.
Two minutes recess.
I move that we adjourn.
I do a second?
Do we want to say that we came back from recess?
We came back from recess.
Everyone has gone and.
And having no further business.
We have no further business.
I move to adjourn.
And I will second that.
The goat by rising.